Okay, we're gonna call up the board of the regular meeting, the board commissioners of the regular Boca Tons Beach and Park District. We'll call Commissioner Roberts.
Here.
Commissioner Angel.
Here.
Commissioner Rollins.
Here.
Commissioner Bogelstein.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Any changes to the agenda? Public requests. Anybody?
Hello, you guys can meet before the time. Dave Bracknell lives in the focus square, hundred and five southwest fifth street. I was excited. I saw that you have the Sugar Sand Park last layout, and I just wanted to say if there's anything I can do. I think this has to do with looking into disc golf and stuff. So is there anything I can do to help? I'm here for it. I would love to get a copy of it. If you guys have like an electronic copy, you could send it to me via email or anything like that. Or if that's available or not, I don't know. But just want to say I'm here if you guys, you know, if we need to get to the next steps to discuss the disc golf and sugar sand. And I saw the tower. I don't really know what's going on there. I apologize. But that tower, when I, my family grew up, we just loved that tower at Gumbel. And we were sad when it went down. So hopefully you guys have given them the one that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody?
My name is Harold Chaffey, and I'm the president of the Pecan Book Club. I just want to make a couple of comments. We had the vision, second vision workshop with Miller Lake. And, you know, I went with, I think I see something destructive that could be moving forward. I was very disappointed. You know, it seemed like we went to the same thing with bubble gun labels again. Everybody was confused. Nobody said what they're supposed to do. You know, they gave it to them. They feel obligated to put them on. They put them on everything. It wasn't like if you don't like something, you don't want something, just don't put it on. It looked confusing. And the other thing too is I know we had the, I know we talked about the three Ps and the aquatic center. I don't know where the hell that came from, or the indoor tennis court, or the racket ball. I mean, I think it was the, the original concept of what we wanted to do. For the pandemic, everybody wanted the outside kind of buildings. They wanted, I mean, if you go to the survey, which we've done many times, it's like a directive that tells you what really we wanted, what the people wanted to do, not just us, you know, the whole city. And it's an easy plan to follow. I don't know where these things are coming from, you know, and it confused everybody. I must have got fifty emails saying that they were disappointed, but they went there in anticipation of seeing something great. And they think it's just another wasted night. I don't think it was presented properly. I don't think there was enough, enough explanation at the beginning. The same thing for last time because the dots. Everybody ran for the board and put them on everything. They had no idea what the colors were or what this or that, right? And then when they, when they finally pulled the panels down to show what else, the, 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 I'm probably wrong. Anyway, the, the, that and the other thing were on every one of the prints. So where was the choice? You know, just, I think it was a big wet dam. I really do. I know you guys are trying to bet your candy, right? And I appreciate it. You know, it's just that we, there's something we missed here. I went to all the meetings. I even asked if there's anything, anybody that came forward and all of you for, you know, to donate something or build something or whatever it is. And there was any comment. To see that, I was surprised, you know? Also, I want to congratulate, can I congratulate you, Robert and Sue? For another sentence, although terms, it's the wrong word. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Raul Travieso. I do the ten thirty seven west water road. And since you haven't seen my sweet face in a while, I thought I'd come and say a few words. My wife laughed at that, so you know. Madam Chair, Board Commissioners, I noticed to end today's agenda, you will go over the district CP, CIP projects and priorities for next year. As the president of the Boca Tons Pickleball Club, and on behalf of Boca Tons community, I wish to thank each of you for listening and for acting quickly on the recreational needs of the city. We wish to thank you for the support to build new pickleball complex during the remodel of the Patch Reef Tennis Center. As you're all aware, the sport is extremely popular and the demand for courts is exploding. I wish to thank Melissa for doing a yeoman's job on the design of the complex. If approved, the pickleball center will be the finest in South Florida. Again, thank you all for recognizing the need of courts and getting in front of the phenomenon called. Thank you.
Thanks, Raul.
Jack McWalter, R and R, RT Secretary. I want to thank you for your service in the Boca community. Most all appreciate your efforts, deeply. And I build on the comments that has been made, especially by Harold. When I, when I went to this meeting Wednesday night, put on by the consultant, when I saw the example of the aquatic Olympic sized pool, I was in shock and awe. I mean, I'm like, a friend of mine told me, I said, I asked him twenty-five million. He says, no, how about fifty million? And I'm thinking, where on God's earth are we gonna get the money? Or are you gonna get the money for something like that? I just don't, I just don't understand it. And then when I printed up the list, I think you all saw it, the, the handout of the nineteen different areas. If you all saw this, nineteen areas. I ended up, the cost of all this, I think we're talking two hundred, three hundred million dollars. I mean, it's, it's, I just, I was in shock. That's all, that's all, that's all I'm saying on that. But a little story though, I want to talk about the city council two weeks ago was looking at a bid. They estimate to be four point five million for three hundred, thirty-two hundred liters feet for replacing the boardwalk at Lake Iman. They estimated four point five million. Came in at fourteen point five million, ten million dollars more for timber. I, so I know all this. I don't, I don't, I don't have to, you know, beat it up. I just, I just think the consultant is doing a disservice to the community by giving false expectations. It would be great to build all of it, just not realistic. We both know there'll never be enough money to even build a small portion. I recommend focusing on the top three on that list on page six of the nineteen areas, which are trails, which are easy. There's no timber involved in trails. The nine-hole executive course, which should pay for itself, according to the experts, once it's built. With a training facility for our kids, which is coming in by the thousands in this community. You think of the thousand new kids who are playing in the Boca, Boca schools. And many of them want, they need a place to learn how to play golf, as my kids did many years, many years ago. If you build a training facility with this nine-hole executive course, just put up a construction trailer to handle the, the, the transactions, which used to be there when it was originally built, when I took my kids there thirty-five years ago. They want very, very little dollars in these types of, leave the rest for natural preserve or open green space. Or, you know, since Mr. Pickleball is here, I said, maybe take the rest of it, pay it all over for a thousand pickleball court expenses. On that. Simple. It's easy to, it's easy to sell to the voters for a modest tax increase, which I believe will be reasonable and acceptable to the voters. Thank you for your service. We deeply appreciate everything that you do. Next.
Thanks, John. Anybody else?
Thank you. Good evening. John Holloway, I am the president and CEO of the Gumbel Limo Coastal stewards. We're in the fifty-three oh one North Federal Highway here in Boca. On behalf of my professional team, we have our veterinarian with us, our director of communications, director of finance, and our director of programming. On behalf of my team, we just wanted to come here tonight to express our continued support and intention to collaborate with you all. On behalf of the four hundred and fifty new members that we have and all of the donors, we just wanted to emphasize our commitment to our share of the stewardship of the Gumbel Limo Nature Center and passion that our trustees and our members have for the environmental interests that are expressed at the nature center and beyond here in Boca. I wanted to give you an update. The agreement that we are working on is still ongoing. In fact, they have a meeting tomorrow morning. I've been meeting with city officials. We continue to hammer that out. There's been some question about that. That is moving along well. I'm confident that we, as an organization, are willing to step up and have some explicit responsibilities there at the nature center. I know that's been a concern. Sea turtle rehab is distinguishing ourselves continually. We are the only sea turtle rehab now in Palm Beach County that is actively taking turtles. I'm very proud of the team of the city employees and our employees that work in sea turtle rehab. We have seen a significant number of turtles coming in, as that the other facility in Palm Beach County has not been able to take any. We've picked up that slack. We're pretty proud of that. And we're doing a lot of activity in and around sea turtle rehab. And Dr. Chubb has been working tires. Also, on your agenda tonight is the tower collaboration. I want to let you all know that we have always been on the side of supporting the family and realizing the tower. We also recognize that this is a very difficult situation with the constraints that we have, the costs that continually seem to rise, the inability to truly fundraise when we don't know when the project is gonna start, when it's gonna end, a window of exactly what it's gonna cost. This has been a very fluid, and I understand that there's no criticism intended to anyone involved, but this is a fluid situation that we, as an organization, have reached a point where any new activity, I would have to take that request back to the trustees. I'm willing to do so. I'm glad to do so. Interested in supporting the family and realizing a true memorial for Jake and want to still have that commitment there with you. And then finally, just I'd like to invite you all to become coastal stewards. We'd love you to start coming out to some of the pop-up sea turtle releases that are happening. We'd love to get you out there. We get very short notice from FWC on some of these. My team does a split second. You've got a couple hours to respond if you can come join us. We'd love to get you on that list. I'd love for you all to stay aware of what we're doing on a day-to-day basis, because we're doing a lot of new things that should make us all as a team proud of Boca Tons. So I thank you all very much. Look forward to the discussion this evening.
Thanks, John. My son does a couple of the environmental camps this weekend, so he really will. Okay, anybody else here?
Good evening, Boca condos seven. Please unmute yourself and state your name and address. You have five minutes.
Hello, excuse me. Hello?
Please state your name and address, please.
This is Regina Eklund, fifty-two oh one Northwest Second Avenue. I, I felt like I needed to speak tonight, given the workshop last week and also the fact that on tonight's agenda is your projected budget for twenty twenty-three funding. The one item I'm there for Ocean Breeze Maintenance Development at seven million, three hundred thousand dollars. My first question would be, how much of that is annual maintenance for the Ocean Breeze property? And my second question would be, what exactly do you plan or hope to do with those remaining funds? I realize that the master plan is in progress and ongoing. Is that going to be enough money to actually get started on something in twenty twenty-three? We realize that with everything on this list, and it's a very ambitious list, as other people have said tonight, you are going to have to prioritize and you're going to have to probably do this project in phases over a number of years. I think it's important that you start looking at that right now as part of the plan and what is going to be the priority and what is going to be done first, how it's going to be funded, and what is the timeline. I also think it's really important that people speak up at this point when we're seeing things that maybe are not exactly what we thought we should be doing with Ocean Breeze. I realize Harold Chaffey spoke up at tonight's meeting. I do appreciate that. I hope you will hear from Rick Hurd as well. I think many of us are a little dismayed to see large buildings that are being considered, such as an indoor racket club and indoor aquatic facility. I think that there is, there is plenty of room there, and our climate in Florida certainly allows for us to do outdoor facilities. Those things were very low on the priority list, so if you're thinking about doing it, it needs to be down the road. Also, I would ask you to please look at doing things like splash pads adjacent to the playgrounds, rather in an aquatic center somewhere else. And also, I think it would be a really good idea to combine some of the things, such as the clubhouse, cafe, restaurant option, and instead of a field house, meeting rooms and activity rooms, which I think was initially what was on a lot of people's agenda or mind for this property, not a field house. So those three things could probably be combined into one building, and I think this is the time to look at those possibilities. I do see that the timeline for Miller Leg has a preliminary master plan due to the district towards the end of July. So I think a lot of things need to be vetted and determined before then. The final master plan in late August, and then the final master plan presentation in early November. I'm glad to see that that will be in early November, when a lot of us will be back in Florida, who have been very involved in this. You could see from the last workshop meeting that this time of year, a lot of residents are not there and are not participating. But hopefully, by November, it's not going to be too late for them to speak up. So a lot of things to be considered and a very short period of time. I do appreciate everything everyone is doing. I am so delighted to hear that Susie Vogel saying and Commissioner Rollins will be running for reelection. I do thank you very much for that. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Regina. Okay. Go ahead and close public requests, and we'll do the approval of the minutes of previous board meeting held on June sixth. Move to through.
Second.
Question? What is it? Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogelstein?
Yes.
And Commissioner White?
Yes.
Motion passes by zero. Okay, on to regular business. The first item is the first public hearing date. Ryan?
Commissioner, as it's time for us to say that, how important first public hearing date for budget and taxes? We need to follow all the term regulations, and I'm recommending that we do this on the same day as our regular meeting. We can recess our meeting at six o'clock, have the public hearing, and then continue with our regular meeting after the public hearing. And since it's, everybody's already got that on their schedules and calendars, so September's a hard month of holidays, and you have to plan this around accounting and the school district hearings as well. So just works out the best date between the third and the eighteenth for us to have it. So just looking for approval of that tonight.
I'll make a motion for approval of it.
Second?
Can we save those dates if you have a second?
We're just gonna have all of our regular meeting is September sixth, and we'll do the public hearing the same night at six o'clock.
Is there another date for his mission?
That's the only one we've looked out at. We'll set the second one at that meeting.
Just a general question and discussion. Don't we also need a meeting before that to set the initial term? Term?
This is your first one. The second one will happen after that. You'll schedule your second hearing after that one.
I thought we normally have to file it at the end of July.
You'll do a tentative military in July, yes. But that's not a public care. That's just setting.
Correct. So there's really three. So the tentative military date, then there's two formal dates.
The tentative military will be set on a regular agenda, a regular meeting in July, yes. And we have a second, so.
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogelstein?
Yes.
And Commissioner White?
Yes.
Motion passes by zero. Okay, number two on the agenda, the Gumbel and Wood Tower discussion. Yeah?
This conversation is continued from our last meeting, where we, all of the board agreed to talk about this again. We heard tonight from John Holloway that they still have the funds from the family that were originally raised. We did also hear from Mike Weka that the city would look for the, for the district to allocate a minimum of two point six million at this point to rebuild the project. So we'll open this back up for discussion. And it's, it's an item that we would have to budget. We're not talking about city CIP, right? But if you budget it, that just know that we would have to set that money aside for next year to continue with this project.
So if you'd like, I'll kind of recap where we're at and get the recommendation. My understanding is that the coastal stewards, as well as the family, are committed to the toddler. We had a lengthy, a good email, or I'm sure it's a letter really, from the assistant city manager, kind of recapping things. It's all come in at far more than we all expected initially. And the open question is, is the timing and the bid. And I think it kind of a capstone of it was Rutherford Park's boardwalks that they were working on there also came in significantly more expenses than anyone ever expected. In both cases, the city staff recommended referring the, you know, the bidding or rebidding of it gave us some options, but they just felt now is not the right time to bid on this. And that I, I kind of come to the conclusion, I concur with. I also kind of come to the conclusion that over the many projects we've done in the community, from the pumps and piping project, which is over three million, to the Sugar Sand Playground that ran around four million, to the Silver Palm Park that is being built by the city, I think that's in excess of ten million. Everything is far more excess expensive than we thought, but kudos to the city from a perspective of quality. You know, we do get a quality park from, you know, El Rio as well. Everything that has been done has been very well in its quality and design, so I have no concerns with that. I think we all struggle with the price, but I'm not sure we're at the point where to say, no. I don't think we're really ready to say, no, we want to answer the questions that John asked, when's it gonna start? When's it gonna end? And how much do they need additional fundraise? And I recall from Mr. Weka's note that it could be a combination of a, how much is the district going to contribute with the community contributions? So you don't know how much to contribute if you don't know the price tag. So I think this is, from a city's perspective, they're just not feeling the comfort level to go out to bid yet on this in the immediate term. And I, I think we need a little bit more opportunity to have a proper fundraising for it. Certainly, the family and it sounds like coastal stewards are actively willing to go fundraise for it. So those, those are big components to it. So my overall recommendation at this point in time is that we support it. But my question is, do we need to have a number in our budget? We're just gonna wait until we're ready to, the city's ready to bid. I think we're on their timeframe, and then we'll find out what the real cost is. And I think we also have to give the go-ahead for others to step in. So I think we also have to think about that, and I don't know if the night's the night, but we will have to make some kind of contribution towards it. We were committed in the beginning to pay for it, and I think we should stay with that, that level of commitment. It's a matter of how much more, and I don't know what that number is. It's just my thoughts on it.
Anybody else? Jake?
Well, having been around a couple of years, one thing that I noticed is that prices very rarely go down when it comes to capital projects, whether it's us or the city or anyone else. This is a fact of life. So I understand the city's reluctance to bid now because things are extremely volatile. But in doing this project, we have to recognize the fact that prices will probably not go down. They will probably stabilize, and I think that's really what we need to wait for, is for prices to stabilize so that we can give the coastal stewards a target number to fundraise for. And we can prepare in our budgets to have a certain dollar amount that we're gonna kick in. My guess is now that, and we have between the contribution from the coastal stewards and what we're asked to set aside approximately three point one million. And that probably won't even be nearly enough. But I, I concur with, with, with the city's idea of waiting a while until prices stabilize so we have an idea of what we're gonna be responsible for.
Just to clarify, we currently don't have any money from the coastal stewards. They, that contract ended, and they've asked for the two fifty deposit back, so we actually cut that check, I think, late. So there's no, right, we had budgeted one point, three million, one point two in this budget here, and they were gonna contribute half of that, but that is no more. So right now, right now, allocating funds is just on the district allocated money.
My point was that even with what the donation had been and the number that I saw in the correspondence from the city, that's still not nearly enough. But that's besides the point, because I agree with the city that at this point, let's wait till things settle down.
I, I also, you know, I don't feel comfortable, the city asking us to, to say two point six million dollars for the tower, to go out for bid. I just don't think it's the smart thing to do right now. So we need to wait. Of course, we are all committed. We all want the tower back. It's an important thing to have. I'll remember it, you know, when we were a kid, but I just don't think it's now is the time. But I also, for the family, we also want, I, for me, I would want them to know that like if they want to move on, because I know they probably don't want this kind of like lingering, you know? They want to move on and they want to honor him. So of course, if they want to go do something else, that they, they should do that. Because we don't know in terms of the timeframe when this is going to be done. I mean, it could be three years from now that we commit to the tower. So, and then, you know, you know, how much is it gonna cost? You know, if you're gonna do fundraising, is that fundraising all gonna go to the tower? There's other things that you guys need to fundraise for as well, you know? So I just think as it stands right now, we need to make that clear to the family that we just don't know. And that if they want to move on to something else, then they should absolutely do that. And that, of course, we're committed to Gumbel Limo and building the tower, but the cost of two point six million dollars in taxpayer money is just not smart. So that's kind of my opinion, and then we just need to keep in contact with the city as, I mean, if we go into a recession, we don't want to be putting two point six million dollars into a tower. things, I mean, if we go into a recession, we don't want to be putting 2.6 million dollars into a tower. That's just not number one priority on our list in terms of projects. So I think we just need to keep in contact with the city and keep an eye on what things are happening with, you know, the, the cost of, of, you know, projects and things like that and see what happens. And I know that's not what you want here, but it's like, that's kind of what we have to do at this point with this project, I think. So.
I, I share Craig's disappointment and those in the audience that have long supported the tower. I mean, I, I was certainly willing at the last meeting to continue the discussion because I was hoping that maybe there'd be a windfall at Craig's house and he'd be able to put up some money to help us. But I, I, I think there's, at this, this time, you know, to go to bid, which is what we had thought. We have to put the money in the budget. I mean, that's just our legal requirement that we have to do that. So I, I think that there are a number of other things on the, on the project that we're probably going to have some not our CIP, but this one probably has a little crossover instead of, you know, trying to balance those items with you know, a reasonable ad more revenue, which we're going to have to be looking at in, in the face of a recession potentially. Now, I, I think it's good to, I hope I learned and I wouldn't say that we would not do the tower. I'm just saying that A, now is not the time. B, the cost is too prohibitive for us to contribute. And I hate to say that, but I think that's, I think that's the prudent thing to do at this time.
I have consulted with the, about you, an engineer who has looked at the plans and everything and he said he doesn't see why it should be this much. He did say that there was some profit, of course, in, in the 2.6 million dollars. So and he grew up running up and down that tower and he would love to see it rebuilt, but not at this time. That was his recommendation to me. So I think, you know, maybe if we table this, like everybody is saying, and let the family know that we are committed at, at some point, if the prices are more reasonable and it's in our budget.
So I guess the question is, what do we do from here? We've got two options. We just table it and do nothing? Or, granted, just from a technical standpoint, do you need to have a placeholder in the budget for anything?
We don't need to make that decision tonight. We'll just tell the city that we're not going to, we're going to just wait on the project.
Yeah, I, I think our goal was to wait, you know? And then I think it's up to really John and coastal stewards and the family to discuss how commitment, what commitment there is to fundraising. So I think the way I understood the, the family member was that they are committed to the tower. So they're, they don't want to, you know, leave it, but they raised what they felt was required and necessary at the time. But they felt there was an opportunity to raise more. So that's an open question. So, but I think the bigger question is, is still a lot of money. And so we're really waiting on this, you know, let it stay in the city's hands for the right time to bid. And when they go out to bid, probably the Rutherford Park project, maybe this is combined the two because they're similar in nature. That's up to them.
Okay, so we're basically going to table it and then if you decide to put something in the budget later on, we can do that.
All right, district CIP projects and priorities for this fiscal year. I'm sure this, that time of year, start talking about the budget. And we have a number of projects and I think you keep discussing some new projects coming up. So I just wanted to put this out there because as, as much as we want to see things happen at Gumbalimbo, we also have our other facilities, which were all built in phases over the course of time. And the Sugar Sand Park is a lot of the amenities out there. And it's not even, not even happening to develop, but we have some work to do on all these parks. We have root work that needs to be done, your generator designs, walkway resurfacing at Patch Reef, the community center support column repair design, which we put a placeholder number in there, but we're actually going to use WZA. It's going to be working with Melissa and Zach from the city. He's the head in municipal services. They're going to meet out there and talk about what they've seen and what they think needs to be done. So we'll get a better idea of that moving forward, but wanted to put a placeholder in there. The bridge safety inspection is not a big number, but we just listed that as one of the factors there. And then we have the, the fieldhouse children, comfort placement, locker room flooring, that's from Center here. And then of course, the tennis and pickleball addition on at Patch Reef. That price, we want to add number, we want to add another 2 million to that budget for next year just based on some of the increasing costs and increasing scope as we talk to staff out there for parking and drainage issues. A new project that was, that was put forward this year was the Sugar Sand Park roller rink cover. And then we have the ocean grease maintenance development. To answer one of the questions that came up during public comment, we spend about 260,000 a year just on maintaining the property right now. Not just the grass and the trees. That doesn't include when people dump our vandalism and those kinds of things that we get the extra for. But we have spent about 1.2 out there this year between the renovations, the demo of the other structures that were out there, the maintenance, and, and of course, the middle lane master plan design. So looking at all these projects, we have some carryover, 7 million dollars to carry forward and a total of 16 million, 140,000 dollars of the projects, just on, these are projects that we manage on our properties. This is not the city CIP. It's only the district CIP projects. And I'm recommending that we carry these projects forward so that we can get some of our facility, make sure our facility stays safe and, and open. And then of course, we need to have money set aside for whatever is decided at Ocean Grease for the maintenance and development of that. So I'm here to answer any questions, talk about any other projects that people want to see. Again, just district properties. Anything else anybody wants to see, anything that anybody wants to maybe table for another time, open that as well.
I have a question about the roller rink cover, the move over the roller rink. I, I'm in favor of it, but I want to, you know, I would like to know who's using the roller rink, how, how many people are using it? Are they district residents or are they from out of the county or out of the city? And just to ask a question, you can't use that even with a cover on it if there's lightning. So that would be unusable at a lightning storm. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And does it get wet? I mean, would it be getting wet? Would it be warm so that it would not form puddles or anything?
No. Yes, the almost to make it so it would be multi-purpose for all different sports, but because lights are out there, the lights have to be changed. The prices is higher than we anticipated because the lighting changes because then the way the basketball bowls are out there now, they kind of deep down. So they would have to be changed and probably drop down from the roof itself. So those are some extra expenses in it. But we can certainly look at who's using the facility. We could put a placeholder in the budget and then if that's something we want to wait on for another time we can, but we'll research who's using it and the numbers.
And does the roller hoop use it? How frequently?
I don't know that number. We'll find out. Okay. Thank you.
I should mention here, I realize this, that we're talking about the district projects, but ultimately we will end up having to say grace over what the city has in mind of CIP projects. And I, I proposed an item that I've asked Brian to check into with the city. Is it, in traveling around different parks, I've noticed that the backstops on a lot of these rectangular fields either have a netting or a fence. For instance, if you're looking at Patch Reef, the northeast field has a fence that's high enough to prevent balls from going over the fence with the soccer and the baseball at the other, on the other side. And at our park at Spanish River, behind those are, you know, a lot, a lot of trees and it's just not a good place to go in to retrieve a soccer ball. It's not, it's, it's not so much a safety issue as it is a convenience of not having to send the child in there in the evening to retrieve a soccer ball that gets sent too deep. It's unrecoverable. The same token, on the other end of the field, if you're playing in an east-west direction, like most of the games are played, balls will actually roll into the parking lot. And, and I witnessed that time and time again this past Saturday, was a, clearly, clearly go and go into the swell area and then roll into the parking lot. I think it's also another safety issue. So I, I asked the city to give us an estimate of what it would cost to set up a safety net, if you would, back there to control the balls and egress into the area where there's a, a wet canal behind there. So I just wanted to mention that to you. So when you see that in there, you won't say, I wonder where that came from? Because I've had a number of people who have approached me about, about that from a safety standpoint, as well as lost equipment that goes into the canal that cannot be retrieved. So just a point that I wanted to mention to be alert to that because I'll be supporting that depending on the cost that we see, but I think it's a, it's truly a safety issue that we I wouldn't say we had neglected. We just didn't, didn't notice it unless you've been out there and witnessed the games. And so you probably haven't, you know, aware of that. I, I prefer not going in and out back there to retrieve a ball. And these pieces of equipment are not inexpensive. So just letting everybody know that for potential CIP, the city. Thanks.
You left a couple of balls. Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, just as a point of information, what was our total CIP last year of our CIP budget? From '21, '22?
Or just district projects or city and district?
City and district. I'm curious as to how much we spent on city projects.
I don't have the totals for how much we spent on the city projects because we're so good for those invoices. Like pipes and pumping, we know is going to get done this fiscal year. The maintenance building is out for bid right now. I don't, I don't think that will get constructed this fiscal year. So that money will carry forward.
But how much did we budget?
I'll give you that number in a minute. For city capital projects, we, we eliminated, so we about 8 million in city projects. And then district projects, we had another 9 million.
So.
And, and of, of that 9 million of ours, we're carrying over money because we didn't do anything above the other side.
So I'm guessing that budget wise, we're looking at roughly 24 million dollars, assuming the city spends a like amount, or we spend a like amount on city projects, or budget a like amount.
I don't think, on the CIP list, there's not a lot of new things for the city because I think they're impacted by a lot of the construction costs. So if we have a lot, I, I think the, the bulk of the number will be carried over from projects that we budgeted.
So probably we're going to have to, based on that, that kind of money, even though there's carryover and there's like 7 million, probably 10 million or 12 million carryover from the previous year. So my guess is we're probably going to have to look at this and prioritize because we won't be able to do everything in the next fiscal year.
I feel confident that we can fund these projects as they are with our budget next year.
I'm just, I, I'm thinking in terms of, well, there's a chance we're going to have a recession and people aren't going to look kindly on expenses and we're probably going to have to pull our belts in a while. But that's what I'm seeing. That's.
Okay, so looking at the, the projects that are here that are listed, a lot of them seem to be, you know, necessary in terms of the roof, the generator, resurfacing, the finished trails. I've walked on those. Those are safety issues for sure. The trailer, the pond, the locker room flooring in this building. The only thing that I think that we might want to hold off on is the, the roller rink. I mean, nobody has come to us asking for this. We don't really know who's using it in terms of residents. I think maybe we can discuss it with the city people and see if they think that this is something that's really necessary right now. Or if it's something that we can hold off on and put off and, and see if it's something that we can do in a, in a year or two. I just don't, I, I just don't see it as something that we need to do right now.
Can I speak to it? Well, I think if I walk through the things, there's a lot of things on here. But just to address the roller rink, I did, the reason it came up is going out there and talking to the roller hockey players. And the concern was there's no cover and that they could play more if it was covered. It's also used for the boka hoops because of the basketballs. But it really isn't so much about that specific thing. It was really about, do you want to build another fieldhouse? This was an alternative to building another fieldhouse, which is very expensive. And to provide a covered access, additional covered access for the community to play from a perspective of using not only the, what's there for roller hockey, but for basketball, you know, and for boka hoops. And to use that as a model for whether you want to have a covered, additional covered environment at Sugar Sand, but could you do this at Patch Reef? If that same model could work there, then you're creating a, a open air access kind of a fieldhouse that is a lot less expensive to maintain. And you're, you know, one of the key things we learned over the process is shelter is important in our, whether it's sun, whether it's rain, it provides that level of shelter that will give it more usage. So I would say, you know, I think the number is probably low at 1.5 million. But I would rather just kind of look at the, explore what the design and the cost is first and then figure out whether you want to do this or not. And I think it's important because it is not just Sugar Sand. It's something that you can use in other locations. That puts me in that. So Brian?
Yeah, this is, these are just kind of designed, they're like pre-designed to fit on top of these things. But this particular one actually was projected to be lower. I, I added a lot more money into the budget line because I thought by the time I get to funding all that, it would cost about 1.5. Here's a suggestion, just for the sake of, of going through this. A lot of these projects are safety. A lot of these projects are just keeping our facilities up and running in, in the fashion of, like, what is it, the mission of generators that work? The generator and the fieldhouse right now, it only, it was made to, to keep the fieldhouses up and running so that those floors would never suffer. If there was a power outage from a hurricane or whatever. Now we've started using like Sugar Sand Park, the last hurricane, well, Boe Hurricane, we had, they, they put the turtles from Gumbalimbo over there in the, in Sugar Sand Community Center. So you wouldn't want the area to go out there. We wanted to redesign the generator so that it can feed more than just the lights at the community center as well and keep that running as well. So some of these things are just projects that have to get done just to keep our facilities up and running. We, I feel confident that we can measure for all these things next year as it stands. But what we can do is just, we're not voting on budget tonight. We're not finalizing any of this. So we will research, staff wise, we will research the roller rink usage, how it would benefit boka hoops, if at all. Because they currently don't use that area unless it's a runoff play, but maybe if there was something better built, then it would. I, I don't know that answer, but I'll talk to Dr. Forstmann about that. We can research that more. We could plan for these in the budget and then before we finalize the budget, obviously, we can take a project out or move it to a reserve fund until later days. This is my, my recommendation.
That makes sense to me. I think it's just researching it a little bit more, define what you can do or can't do. And maybe we decide we don't want to do it. The things that I thought were missing, I just kind of questioned, I mean, there's basically, is there anything additional for ocean strand? Just building the pathway and we're done? Or is it all budgeted? Is there anything else to go out there?
I just wanted to get the pathway done first and then, and then talk about anything extra. We're waiting on one more permit. And tonight we're cutting a check for the beautification indexies. Hopefully we'll get that second permit released after that. But there's no, we're not going to, I don't have anything planned for that. If you guys want to talk about finding something else out there?
Well, I think down the road, you should think about each park as its own and that what are we doing for each one? And what kind of, whether it needs capital improvement and what is the like five? And what kind of, whether it needs capital improvement and what is the like five year plan for each one, rather than trying to figure it out right now. Um, each part kind of stands on its own. So I didn't see anything there for Ocean Strand on it. And I didn't see anything for Gumbo Limbo. It'd be nice to know if we got something funded additional or not.
That'll be in the city.
City, the city CIP. Okay, fine. Um, and then the other one is disc golf. Dave has been here a couple of times and he's looking for that. That's a very low cost solution, but it does require money to be spent on it. And if you're gonna do work on it, it's gonna take some money to do it. Um, that's later in the budget, but it seems like that one here if you're gonna do that.
We can allocate money. I think when we get to that next item on the agenda, when we talk about that, I think that work order will give us more of an idea of what the city would require of putting in something like that. And if that requirement, if they say you have to add more restrooms, you have to add more parking, obviously that changes the cost of that whole project. So I I didn't want to put a number in there right now until we know that, but certainly we'll have some reserves left to look at that if that was a project that you wanted to do next year.
Okay. Okay, so the purpose is just chatting about all of them and not gonna.
Well, I I'd like to plug these into the budget if everybody's comfortable with that. And and you're not approving it tonight, but these are projects that you're gonna see coming up. These are things that we need to plan for and budget for and new items like like the disc golf and, um, you know, the cover and the roller hockey rink. Those are things that the thing I want to be cautious of is that we have older facilities that are gonna need maintenance and they're gonna be very expensive to fix up. And we can't wait for a recession to end before we fix some of these older buildings. So I want to make sure we have money set aside for those projects and know that we have these expenses coming up for these things before we start adding too much to our plate that we can't support.
So are you going to be putting the rink cover in there?
I'm gonna research it first. Okay, now I'm gonna plan on it being there and then.
Just so you know, the the Boca Hoops uses the south side, the the hoops that are there, they don't use the the roller rink area. So I'm, that's why I'm I'm more concerned about actually, how many people are we, you know, servicing in terms of putting this cover? Is it gonna be, you know, fifty people? We're spending one point five million on the cover over. I know hockey, outdoor hockey is important, but if it's not that many people that are using, it might not be worth doing. So.
I concur. I, you know.
I I I think that, you know, Chris, make your point. And I think the suggestion that we explore who's using it is is fine for now. I think we can keep that in there, always take it out. But I I'm I'm fine with a list of projects that are there. And then to Chris' point too, is that we always need to keep an eye looking forward individual parks. Because at some point, we'll be looking at maintenance on those as they're expensive. This is a new park and before you know it, it'll be, you know, ten or twelve years old, we look into HVA systems and uh, so, uh, but I I'm good with what we have here since this is a, it's a wish list that we have and you think we can accommodate. And so let's plug it in the budget and we can always make the adjustments up or down or eliminate completely.
Anything in motion?
Sounds like there's consensus and direction to your executive director. She'll take that information, bring that A proposed budget with your consideration.
All right. So the final thing on regular business is Sugar Sand Park thought layout.
Getting back to the, um, idea of the disc golf. Page nine of your agenda packets. Just a number for me. And then you can see the work order from CGA. What they will do is evaluate the site, redo, do a new plan at Sugar Sand Park and and do an overlay of where structures are currently, where we can actually build, where we can't. What impacts, what it means to develop conservation areas will be required. And they would also evaluate what the city requirements would be per code, um, to construct something like this. And and then we would get a better idea of what we're looking at. It sounds like something would be very inexpensive to do, but trying to put a walking trail at Ocean Strand Park turned into a much more expensive endeavor. So I think it's good to find out ahead of time before we budget or allocate any funds to it first. So looking for approval tonight of that work order. Total is six thousand three hundred and ninety two dollars. When was the last time this, that park was planted? I think it's from the nineteen, I think it's nineteen ninety, I think it was nineteen ninety four, somewhere around there. Um, before the structure report was built on, they put the conservation areas in place. So it wasn't done when Addison Beiser was trying to. They, no, they just looked at those things that we had. Yeah, thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motions. We approve this six thousand three hundred and ninety two to move forward.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Arns?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Volboulton?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, Craig, approval of payroll and invoices.
Yeah, apparently you're making a motion for payroll and invoices. One of them for four hundred thousand eighteen, four hundred eighteen thousand, seven, seven dollars.
Second. Second. Wilson.
Commissioner Arns?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Volboulton?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, reports and discussion of items.
Well, just a couple of items. We had, uh, the carousel repairs are underway. There were some additional parts that are arriving now. So they'll be out there, uh, finalizing those repairs. We hope to be open in July for the carousel. I did want to let everybody know that there are some major staffing issues going on in the city. The community center section alone is down twenty five people. So we may look at reducing the hours of the carousel. Like I don't, I don't know if that has to be open at ten AM on Monday morning, but we'll look at reducing some of those hours until we can get fully stocked and HR is supposed to those positions. If people know anybody looking for work, send them through the city's website. They have a lot of jobs advertised. I'll put that out there. Also, the Dornley Maintenance Building is out to bid now, just so you know, the bids are due back on July eighteenth at three PM. And that was a project that we are funding partial drug back. The Petri Park pickleball and tennis site, um, design, the city staff has reviewed it, all has gone through it. Give our our pickleball groupers in the community take a look at it as well. So they're working on the specs for that project now. And then we'll have the kickoff meeting for the, um, swimming racket center, um, project will take place after July fourth weekend. That's all and a half a month dates.
District capital?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On behalf of Sam and myself and our law firm, which I congratulate my Chair Rollins and Commissioner Volboulton for their reelection. Uh, other than that, I would like to report to you.
Thank you. Questions? Who wants to go first?
I'll go. Yeah, just an observation about the Boca Tequila Ocean Breeze, uh, shreds and everything. I would say there, the Lord like is going through this process and, you know, it it's not done yet, you know? And so I think there are parts that many people expressed this budget with, some parts that people expressed, you know, pleasure with. So it's a mixed bag. Um, I would say let them continue on their process of what they need to do. And there, I I do believe that there is demand for aquatics, although expensive. I'm not saying that that's something that we can afford or do in any way or form. And I also would point out that this is a community project. It's not just a Boca Tequila project. So that means it's gonna have public access to the community. And that, you know, we, I think we want to expect certainly what's in the Boca Tequila community. And some people have expressed a concern about some of the parking. And I concur, there's some areas that can we work with what was there previously? How can we use it in that format? But let's not prejudge it. Let's let, or like go through the process. And I don't think that we as a group can necessarily do it ourselves. It's gonna be done with partnerships and the number one partner we have is the city. And so when we get there, we have to kind of, you know, go back to the city, go back to them and and say, how is this really gonna be done? And what's the timeline of it? And is there a timeline on it? Um, there is no, um, I think, depends on who you talk to, where you want a sense of urgency or not. It depends what's coming in or not. So it's, we gotta be patient. Let's let them finish out the process. Then they'll look for the public private partnerships and the city's aspect of it. But just be patient. That's my take on it. So.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just echo someone to Chris said and to one of the comments from, you know, public requests is that we we obviously cannot do this ourselves cost wise and it's already demonstrated the the cost is, uh, you know, millions and millions of dollars which we don't have in the copper. And I I think that it'll be, it'll have to be a face in project and hopefully we can find some way to obtain assistance with the development of the property with either the land lease. I don't know, we can do the PP three. Uh, so there has to be some other creative way that we can do that. But like anything that the district has done, it's done, uh, A for the community and supports the neighborhood in which it's being constructed. And we'll do the same thing. I guess I know I was I was unavailable, I was out of town during the presentation, but I did see plans that were laid out there. Some good, some not so good. I think we all agree that it looked a little chub together in in my estimation because, uh, you know, it's like you can't be all things to all people. So you can't try to shuttle in there everything that everybody said they would like to see in there. I think that's not realistic. But what is realistic is that we keep working with the public and try to come to a consensus on what goes in that property that benefits the entire community. Uh, to that, I think, uh, we're following agreement and we'll do it correctly. It takes a little bit longer to get it done. Uh, I'd rather do it right. And accommodate those needs, the recreational needs demonstrated we have, rather than trying to go too fast and get it up too quickly and because this is something that's going to last for generations, I hope. I do believe we'll get the project done. I I want to see it done, but I want to see it done correctly. And and I want the folks in the community that are enjoying the property to be happy with it. And I also want it to be, you know, something that's, uh, looked upon as a community wide project, uh, so that everybody can enjoy the walking trails and wherever. As to the individual components right now, it's really too early for me to tell you what's going there. Although I do agree that something that'll put some money into on the table by the way, if we're doing it would be a golfing center of some description. Uh, and there've been a number of different types of golfing facilities that have been discussed whether they're, you know, a par sixty four, a short nine hole course, a training center, but something for the younger folks to to play and enjoy as well as the folks that are becoming seniors to play, uh, play golf, uh, with that restriction that says that too much. So, um, we'll keep, just keep working on it and we'll get it right. And to those in the audience, uh, we hear you. We'll make sure that we take everything into consideration that and and see that this project is something that everybody is proud of. And and I'm delighted that we're also getting the pickleball issue taken care of, uh, for two of my friends in the audience that have been plus Melissa over there. Uh, I I I think it's, uh, it's it's wonderful that we can adapt to a growing sport like this and accommodate their needs. And I hope that, uh, you know, when when the city looks at developing both the country, uh, they take consideration. We've got a nice complex here. And there, and that, uh, we, uh, have accommodated these pickleball folks for now. Uh, the other question I have too is, do we know what's the, what's on the agenda for phase two? Uh, Brienne?
Phase two of the Dornley Park?
Yes, right.
They have not, I'm totally have not decided anything for phase two.
I I know they hired Governor Udano to do the work. I just like to know if you might check and see what I know it's not gonna be this fiscal year like it was originally planned, but how far out when they see it? Because I can tell you is that, uh, we get into, uh, the spring and we get into a real crunch on, uh, rectangle fields uh, for both the adults and the youth that compete for the same, uh, same, same property. The good news is with the Petri being playable twenty four seven, uh, that's been an asset. And hopefully when, uh, San Pine opens up, both facilities will be okay. But I'm still concerned that at some point, uh, the university is going to outgrow us and we'll get displaced in those three facilities. It'll be hard to replace unless we've got, uh, the force I think it, uh, phase two over to Spanish River up and running. So, so thank you for listening and congratulations, Sue.
I agree with Bob and Craig about we can't do everything all at once. The golfers and the people who are looking for walking trails have been very patient and we appreciate your patience. I think that there are ways to get things funded, that Boca is a very generous community. And perhaps with our, um, policy in place that we can accept donations. Maybe there's some way to, you know, get some part of the facility donated, you know, maybe part of the learning center or you know, part of the dog park, whatever, uh, and have that have naming rights or something like that. We don't have to do everything at once. It it does have to be phased in. But we do want to make it right. And, um, I do have one question, Brienne. Um, when I go and play golf at Red Reef, there's an impact fee on the, um, the little receipt. Where does that money go? Is it, is that a part of the maintenance or is that something retirees off your old golf cart or what? What what does that do?
I don't know.
Congratulations, Commissioner Rollins. And thank you, Brienne. Brienne has helped a tremendous amount, keeping my spirits up when, uh, I was worried about somebody running against me. So, thank you.
Yeah, um, first of all, I want to put the minds of people who commented tonight at ease a little bit. What you saw probably is not at all what the final product is gonna look like. And it'll probably be a lot less. Uh, also, I would like to remind everybody that the city hasn't weighed in yet with their input on this. And, uh, I'm sure they're gonna have something to say. So I'd be, I I'm eager to hear, uh, what city council and city staff has to say about about the ideas that we have for, uh, for Ocean Breeze. So, um, you know, but in due time, everything, in the fullness of time, as they say, everything will come to pass. Not everybody will be happy. But hopefully we'll be able to make the overwhelming majority of the community happy with the final product. Just bear with us.
Thank you. Ocean Breeze, I kind of, um, would reiterate a lot of what Craig and Bob said in terms of the moonlight presentation. I was a little disappointed that there wasn't more variation in different options that we were looking at. It was the same things on each option, just in different places. I wish there was more of a green space option or more of a, um, you know, just different options than we're looking at versus the same amenities in different areas. So hopefully, you know, they'll take some of that, uh, news that we've given them, see what they come back with and then we'll move on from there. Um, again, reiterate the the fact that everybody needs to be patient. And, um, obviously we'll be able to target the low hanging fruit items such as trails, which we should be able to possibly target first to get something done out there. So, um, but we thank them for their presentation and their hard work on that. And, um, I think that's it for me. So, Steve?
Want to adjourn?
Second.
Commissioner Arns?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Bobolson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes, we have some, we just adjourned, so should we? Should I ask for commissioners? Commissioners, we have somebody in the audience who would like to speak. What is your?
Number five, two. Sure.
Okay, so we will open it back up? And just open it back up?
We can be meaning, we open public comment.
Okay. We'll reconvene. And we'll open public comment back up. So if you'd like to come up and speak at the podium, say, say your name and your address.
Hi, Dr. Gisbon, 625 Old Rock Forest Fourth Avenue in Boca Raton, 33487. Thank you so very much for opening to questions and, and concerns. I, I am with you. I agree that Miller Lake should continue on and we let them, we should let them finish their work. My concern is that their voting system is not being fair in terms that on the last meeting, I saw households composed of maybe four, three, four members in one household, and they were all giving these thoughts for them to vote as one household. And for example, with myself, it's only me. So I get one vote, one set of dogs for one house. And they are one house and they get four dogs. And I'm looking to show that that is a fair voting. On the other hand, I saw also on the walls, they were saying, go and put your dog in whatever choice, in whatever choice you like the best. But I never saw a box saying, I don't want any of this. So I stood up and I spoke to the Miller Lake guy, Miller Lake guy. And I say, I don't want this. And he immediately said, well, you don't have to vote. Of course I don't have to vote, but that's not the point. Because they're still gonna go with the majority of dogs there are in the choices. There is no box for I don't want this. So I felt like they were, they were imposing those choices, whether we like it or not. It was choose between A, B, C, but there was no, I don't want any of this. So yes, we should let them continue to do job and finish up, but in a fair way, both in voting by household or business person over household. Yeah, is it, do we have a choice or do we not? And then lastly, I wanted to ask you, you were mentioning, Brienne, you were mentioning about budgeting for, before and after the recession, like with the power, Gumball Limo. And this project at, at Ocean Breeze is gonna cost a lot of money. Wherever the money's coming from, who would like to know? But is it gonna be, are we gonna wait until after the recession or before the recession? What is the timeline? Because we're talking about a lot, a lot, a lot of money that I would like to know how, is that going to impact us residents, residents in terms of poverty taxes? Of course, we're gonna have to pay for it eventually, one way or the other. And we don't know anything.
Well, I would invite you to continue coming to the next few meetings because we talked about the budget over the course of the summer. The most, the bulk of our money comes from taxes. We do get some revenue, like this particular facility, this facility makes the most revenue, but most of our money comes from taxes levied on companies.
Okay.
But I would invite you to continue to come and watch the budget process and learn more about it throughout the summer.
All right, so still, is it going to be, we're gonna wait on the, on the after the recession or is it gonna be?
We adopt a budget annually. Every year we adopt a budget. And I, I, this board is the one that votes on that. So again, I just invite you to take part in the process. Each year we do a budget, every year.
Okay, well, that's all I wanted to say about, thank you, about the voting process that I think needs to be more fairly done. Thank you.
Bye, Bob.
Just one comment. The five folks that you have to worry about are sitting right here. We're gonna be fair and your vote will be represented. Coming to our meeting is important. We hear from the public. Demonstrate, we opened up a public hearing specifically so that you can express your opinion because it's important and it's of value to us. And in looking at this project, as I said earlier, we want it to be a project that's good for your community and for the Boca community as a whole. We're going to make sure that it's done in such a fashion that it's, not everybody will be totally happy, but we're hoping everybody will have some degree happiness with the project and we'll make sure that your voice is heard.
Thank you so very much. I'm looking forward to see the box saying, I don't want any of this.
I can't promise you that. If that's your vote here at the podium, then you can always express that vote there and get a lot more weight there.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna do the.
Now second.
Linda?
Commissioner Arts?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Bobolson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Motion passes by two.